Do we, um... Yeah, I don't, Betsy's on the line. Do you typically do a roll call, Betsy?
We start with all call.
Okay, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kick off the meeting and I'm gonna ask, uh, Betsy Brown to do the roll call.
Recording has started.
Here.
Karen McCormick.
Here.
Cindy Param.
Here.
Jeff Steele.
Yeah.
Alex Durrell.
Here, thank you.
Magikus.
Here.
Scott Nickel.
Here.
Sharon Puscelli. Lauren Carson.
Here.
Alice Kelly.
Here.
Earth Opena.
Here.
Marcella.
Here.
Look the ass.
Here.
Josh Garstoff.
Here.
Josie Burt.
Here, yeah, you're breaking up, uh, Betsy.
A Wolk. Matt Ambrose. Hannah Gale.
Here.
Sorry, that name was here.
Here.
Thanks, Matt. Lucy. Hey, we got you. Tamisha Tomore.
Here.
Lauren Bovee.
Here.
Mark McDermott.
Here.
Joanna.
Here.
Karen Whackerman.
Here.
In Ferentz. Pamela Iacono.
Here, here.
Messina.
Here.
Drew Tallman.
Here.
Drew Georgiades.
Here.
Rick Robb. Chrissy Kelly.
Here.
Bill Perugini.
Here.
Rick the Cheese.
Here.
Do you have an announcement for your district?
Yes, Betsy, I just want to welcome, uh, Peter Britton, District Two, as, uh, Representative.
Here.
Thank you, Peter, you're here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you, Liz Alteval.
Present.
Marissa Rangel.
Here.
Thank you.
Hello?
Is the first-elect woman there?
Yes. Are we done with roll call?
Yeah, it seems like it's a connection.
I couldn't tell, I'm sorry. Okay, I would, uh, I'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if we could all stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Um, I would, uh, ask actually everybody if they could, uh, stand up again. I would like to, um, request a moment of silence for Harry Ackley, who served our community, was a long-time, uh, member of our fire department, who served on the Fire Commission, he served on the RTM and various boards in our town and dedicated his life to our community, and he passed away recently, so I'm just asking for a moment of silence in honor of Harry Ackley. Thank you. Um, I'd also like us to, uh, also have a moment of silence on today's anniversary, the eighth year since Sandy Hook, the tragedy in Sandy Hook Elementary School happened in our state. You can all, um, just join me also in a moment of silence for, for, for the 26th who lost their lives. Thank you. Uh, item number two, uh, to consider and act upon the minutes, special meeting held on October 26th, 2020.
Motion to approve, Madam Selectwoman.
Thank you, and on November 12th, 2020.
Motion to approve both Representative Iacono, District Eight.
Second, that Mark McDermott, District Seven.
Is there any discussion?
Uh, ye- yes, I needed to make a motion to amend.
Go ahead.
Um, just the minutes of October 26th, 2020. Can I, is there a second?
I'll second Representative Iacono.
Thanks. Um, in the item number six on the call, when it's under the part of the, um, verip discussion, it says that Jay Wolk moved to postpone the item, um, it was me, Jill Vergara.
Okay, so you have a motion and, uh, a second. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Amended, uh, minutes, amended minutes, uh, October 26th and the November 12th, 2020 minutes, uh, do I have a motion to approve as amended?
Still moved, Representative Iacono.
There a second?
Second, Representative Whackerman, District Seven.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
So I will now open the floor for nominations for moderator. Do I have a nominee, uh, a motion, do I have a nomination for moderator?
Um, Madam First-elect Woman, I don't know if you can see the chat, Bill Gerber, um, would like to speak.
I'm sorry, it's a little hard for me to see it. Oh, sure, go right ahead, Bill.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I would like to nominate Karen Whackerman as moderator. Um, it's been a very difficult year, uh, the worst global pandemic in a hundred years, and Karen has navigated us through the difficulties of all the remote meetings, and, um, I feel we've had productive RTM meetings, committee meetings, despite the difficult situation. I don't think I could have done that, so I really appreciate that very much, and for that reason alone, I believe she deserves to be moderator for another term. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Do I have a second?
Uh, Representative Seibert, District Five.
Go ahead, Representative.
Oh, I second, sorry.
Okay, very good. Are there other, are there any other nominations from the floor for moderator?
Madam First-elect Woman, Representative Iacono, District Eight.
Yes, Representative.
I would just like to speak before we vote. If this is an appropriate time, can you please let me know?
Uh, concern is no, uh, concern is the time.
Um, as I stand before you as a representative, I would just like to say, uh, that the role of the moderator is an extremely important one, is a facilitator, and it's extremely impers- important that that person stay impartial. Um, it has indeed been a very difficult year. It's very difficult to learn new technology, it's very difficult to run meetings on WebEx, um, to control things, audio, as it is, it's very difficult tonight. But it is important to remember that first and foremost, the moderator is a facilitator, they run our meetings, they are the very essence of what that word is, moderate, and I think it's important that that role be and maintain and remain that way, and I hope that everybody keeps that in mind as they vote this evening, that that person standing at the podium should be as bipartisan as possible, and when that is not possible, that that person should step off the dais, dais, and let their deputy take over. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Are there any further comments or, um...
I'd like to make a comment. Lauren Bovee, District Seven.
Sure, go ahead, Representative.
Um, I'd just like to comment on, um, how, uh, nonpartisan I think Karen is, how much I appreciate her very leveling and calm manner, and it's helped me a lot in my first, uh, couple of terms, I've been impressed with her ability to stay calm under some very exciting moments and, uh, heated times, and always rightfully so, uh, you know, this lively debate is difficult to manage, and everybody's opinion is important, and I think Karen does a great job at keeping it, um, you know, I always told her that before I knew, uh, knew her very well, that she seemed to me to be very, very a mediator and very level, and so I, I appreciated that, thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
Can I say something, Laura Carson, District Four?
Laura, go right ahead.
I just wanna, uh, uh, I agree with Lauren Bovee, she's definitely, I've known Karen since I moved here 10 years ago, and she's been a very fair, calming, moderate, I would say she's partisan, bipartisan as best as you can be, especially during these really difficult year of trauma that's been pu- for a lot of people, so I'm very happy to vote yes for her because she fills the bill. Thank you, that's all I wanna say.
Thank you, Representative. Further comments from the body?
All right, I would like to make a comment, Madam First-elect Woman.
Okay, Representative Steele.
Um, Jeff, this is Jeff Steele, District Two, um, thi- this isn't, this isn't, uh, any commentary on, on an individual, it's commentary on a position, um, and I, I, I would just like to make sure that, um, the moderator will be nonpartisan, not even bipartisan, but nonpartisan, and, uh, and, and simply allow all members to speak before they then speak at the end, I think that would be the fairest way to go about our dialogue, and, uh, and this would be whoever is moderator, um, so I would just ask that, so all members can speak, um, before the moderator were to weigh in, and if the moderator decides to weigh in, that the deputy moderator come in, or that, um, here, she, uh, comments at the end, before we have a vote, that's what I would like to ask or make note of.
Thank you, Representative Steele. Other, are there, any, any other comments from the body?
Representative Georgiades would like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Representative.
Uh, Drew Georgiades, District Nine, um, I would like to comment on, um, Karen Whackerman's patience. She's very patient this year, it's been hard with a lot of new members that were elected, uh, one year ago. Uh, the training has been, uh, difficult, we, we couldn't do our Robert's Rules of Order, and, uh, I think she's been very nonpartisan in, um, giving people the benefit of the doubt, letting them speak, um, so, uh, and that's, I feel like, 2020 is just being a little more patient and, uh, rolling because things just aren't the same, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative. Are there any additional comments from the body? Seeing none, I'm going to close the nomination. All in favor of Karen Whackerman as moderator, please, uh, raise your hands or say aye.
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 It looks like the motion carries. So congratulations, uh, Mrs. Whackerman, moderator.
Madam First-elect Woman, Madam First-elect Woman, you need to ask for nays and abstentions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any nay?
Yes, uh, Representative McCormick from District Two, I am a nay.
Okay. Uh, any others?
Elizabeth Alzabelli from District Ten, a nay.
Any additional?
Mike Mahoney, District One, nay.
Okay, um, are there any abstentions?
Representative Iacono abstains.
Representative Tallman abstains.
Christina Sina, District.
Representative Steele abstains.
Representative Peter Britton, District Ten abstain.
Representative Giro, District Ten abstains. Chrissy Kelly, District Nine abstains.
Betsy, do you have all those reported?
I have three nos. And seven abstentions.
Okay.
Can we write the abstentions in the chat, Betsy, is that helpful?
Yes. I can, I can go over them right now. I have Rugerio, Steele, Iacono, Tallman, Kelly, Britton, and Patisse as abstentions.
And Grauer.
Thank you, Rick. There are 40 present. So the vote is 30, 3, 7.
Is that everything? You have all of them?
Monahan abstains.
Perugini abstains.
Messina abstains.
27, 3, 10.
Is that everyone, Betsy?
Yeah.
All right, um, okay, the motion carries, uh, congratulations, uh, Moderator Whackerman, and I'm gonna hand the meeting, uh, back over to you.
Thank you, Madam First-elect Woman. Um, I'd like to, uh, open, um, nominations for deputy moderator. May I have, um, someone who'd like to make a motion?
Uh, this is Cindy Param. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Cindy Param, RTM District Two, and I make a motion to elect Mark McDermott as deputy moderator for the coming year.
Okay, is there a second?
Drew Georgiades, District Nine, I'd like to second Mark McDermott, um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, are there any other nominations? Okay, um, all in favor of, uh, Mark McDermott for deputy moderator, please say aye.
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 One opposed? Thank you. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, Mark, congratulations, you're deputy moderator still, I'm glad.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Next, um, item is item four on the agenda, to consider and act upon the following resolution recommended by the town clerk. Resolved that in accordance with the town charter and state filing rules, the representative town meetings shall hold their regular meetings for the year 2021 on the following dates, January 25th, February 22nd, March 22nd, April 7th, 8th, and 26th, May 3rd and 24th, June 28th, July 26th, August 23rd, September 27th, October 25th, November 29th, and December 13th. Uh, may I have a motion to approve this resolution? Uh, Representative Alice Kelly. Uh, second. Um, Representative Spalier, um, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, the motion passes. Um, the next item was item five, to hear a report from the Joint Retirement Investment Board, we heard that report last, um, week at the, um, committee meeting. Um, items six, eight, and nine are, um, on the consent agenda because they were unanimously approved at the joint committee meeting. May I have a motion to vote on them together and on a consent agenda, uh, Representative McDermott, seconded by Representative Pistilli, um, are there any objections to putting these on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, um, let's vote, um, all in favor of items six, eight, and nine, please say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you, that pa- those items pass.
Charlie.
Item seven on...
How long's it been?
Who's that? Okay, we're not talking about this. Item seven on the agenda, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Resolved that the program year 45, October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020, Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan B, and hereby is amended to include a supplemental appropriation of 200. Um, there's a motion to waive the reading from Representative Havy, and I would be happy to do that if someone would second that. Um, Representative Bovee, thanks. Um, may I have a motion to approve this, um, resolution? Uh, Representative, uh, Gale, and may I have a second? Uh, Representative, um, Nickel, um, any discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you, the motion passes. Um, item 10, to consider and act upon the following resolution recommended by the Board of Education. Resolved that in accordance with Connecticut General Statute 10-153DB, the collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Education and the Fairfield Education Association for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024 is rejected. So I just wanna remind you that if you vote yes on this motion, um, you're rejecting the contract. So this is one where if you wanna, uh, approve the, the teacher's contract, you vote no. Um, may I have a motion to approve this? Resolution. Representative Havy, and who is that?
Uh, Representative Darrell.
Darrell, seconded by Representative Darrell, thank you. Um, is there any discussion? Okay, so we'll go to a vote, and again, remember that a yes vote rejects it and a no vote accepts it, approves it. Um, all in favor, please say aye. Was that an aye or just a, no? Uh, all, uh, opposed, please say, uh, nay?
Nay.
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 Anyone abstaining?
Nay.
Okay, so the motion, the resolution is rejected and the contract is approved. Um, thank you very much. Um, item 11, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the first-elect woman. Resolved to fund and approve the attached agreements between the Town of Fairfield and the United Public Service Employees Union Number 454, the Fairfield Professional and Technical Employees Union, and United Public Service Employees Union Number 222, including non-eligible employees for voluntary early retirement incentive plan for eligible members. May I have a motion to approve this item? Um, Representative Ringel, and, uh, moves it, and Representative Carson seconds. Uh, is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator?
Yes. What's that?
I, I wasn't sure if you wanted me to start presenting this.
Um, yeah, you could, I, I, I thought we had a pre- presentation last week, but if you'd like to speak, please do.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, so I just wanna first off by saying that, um, uh, I, we sent a list of, uh, we responded to questions that came in on Friday from the moderator, and I hope that everyone got a copy of those, um, lot of answers to different things, um, but I wanted to just make a statement and then open it up if I could. Uh, and I wrote them down, so, uh, just have a little patience. Uh, if, I would just first like to say it, that it's, you know, always been my nature to be, uh, to work and be honest and transparent in my 20-plus years as an elected official serving the Town of Fairfield. I ran for this job to make a difference in our community, to deliver on the promises that I made, and to deliver for our community on the things they asked for me to do. I have made an effort to give as much information... I have made an effort to give as much information as possible on this Vera Plan without violating confidentiality with employees out of respect for them, and also knowing that nothing is guaranteed in this process because there are so many variables. I have put myself on the line and have said in public meetings and in my newsletter that this is my proposal and that I take ownership of it. And I will report on its success because I believe that it will be a success for our community. Vera is part of a bigger plan to rebuild a more efficient, accountable town government that is responsive to residents, to attract new talent that have the s- the skills to succeed in the twenty-twenty environment and to provide the highest level of customer service to our residents. The goal has always been to reorganize departments, consolidate unnecessary positions, to move, to more easily integrate technology and skills needed, and general change in the culture of our town government. I want to clarify that the process for the second Vera proposal you are voting on this evening. And I do want to apologize if I, if I wasn't clear at the first meeting, um, or if, I reread the piece that we sent to you and I could see how it could be misunderstood, and I just want to refer to it in the memorandum on December first, where I think there was some confusion some members shared with me. Uh, in that, in that memo to the RTM, it says the town would conduct a financial analysis based on those who are likely to elect the package. The financial analysis reflects our estimate that seventeen normal retiree- retirees and six early retirees would occur. I think some people, uh, thought that that was a hard, hard number. In the first, um, in the first Vera proposal, I heard the RTM loud and clear, you wanted specifics, not ranges. So we approached the revised plan with a different process so that we could have a more accurate number. For the second Vera, employees were required to express interest if they were considering electing in the program and would not be allowed to have a chance of participating if they didn't add their names by the deadline. Our HR department met with those who had interest in the plan and wanted information for their insurance and Medicare calculations, et cetera. From those meetings, HR was able to determine confidentially who would elect in the plan. Some employees came in multiple times for calculation, some came in only once to have a discussion, while others came in just to drop off the form and had no discussion and didn't ask for any calculation. Based on my discussions with our town's benefits manager, we are confident that twenty-three employees will take advantage out of the thirty-one who expressed possible interest. Could there be more? Yes, but as I've repeatedly stated in public meetings and for this body, that I take full responsibility that the program, regardless of the number of employees, will ensure that this budget is budget neutral. But to expect, I do expect to achieve savings as I've outlined in our calculation, and you can hold me to that. I would like to just go over some of the questions that were received this afternoon. Um, I was asked, please confirm that all three positions, that all three positions will be eliminated by Vera participants. We are committing to eliminating three positions. It may not be one of the twenty-three that go into Vera, so I think this question is trying to find out if we're going to use unfunded positions that are in the budget as positions that we're going to eliminate. And I just say, no, we will not be doing them. I intend to eliminate three current funded positions. Cutting positions in the budget that are unfunded does not do anything for me, and I don't intend to admit, manipulate the data in any way. I have given my word, and I will do as I say I was going to do. Number four, uh, please also confirm that no one whom has initiated the retirement process already is eligible for Vera. There is no one currently eligible for Vera that has previously put in for retirement. One, uh, one of the questions was, has anyone retired since the budget was passed last year? If so, please provide details regarding the position and state whether the position has been filled or not. Um, there were three positions, uh, that, three retirees since the budget passed last year. Joan Ryan from our Park and Rec Department, which was filled. Uh, Linda Gardner, uh, retired, and we have posted that job, that's the Budget Director, and there's a DPW position that is vacant at this time. I was asked how many people retired last year and how many people retired the previous year. This is a manual process to be able to come up with this, and it's not easily available. Uh, we just weren't able to do it, there, there, we have antiquated systems here, which I spoke about, uh, I've spoken about quite a bit, uh, to town bodies, and, um, honestly, it's, it's, it's a little difficult, but they were be able to pull twenty-two people of, retired in one year out of five hundred and nineteen active employees, and that includes police and fire. So it's a very small percentage, the majority of those, we believe, were for police and fire. Um, one of the questions is, what is the average retirement age for PDA, FIA, and DPW respectively? We don't have a system that tracks that right now in our HR department. We would like, you, you would have to go through all the pension, uh, on the Vri- uh, the J-RIP minutes and pull it out and look it up one by one, and, and frankly, we just didn't have the manpower to be able to do that. Uh, what is the average retirement age? Um, we, okay, I did say that. Um, please provide a list of currently unfilled positions in PDA, FIA, and DPW, and which positions you plan to fill. I'm not, I'm not really sure how this question fits into our discussion. It is part of our overall discussion about what our government will look like after the reorganization. The list of unfilled positions were, was provided to the Board of Finance recently based on a question from a member, um, and it's primarily police and ECC. Uh, what positions we refill and don't will depend on the V-RIP and the overall, overall reorganization. So I can't exactly speak to the specifics of that. Um, again, uh, cutting unfunded positions doesn't benefit me in this process. And number ten, if the plan is not approved, will you eliminate three positions, why or why not? Uh, I cannot commit to eliminating positions without the V-RIP plan, that's been a part of my overall plan associated with the V-RIP. And so I just wanted to, uh, share that with you, Madam Moderator, and with the body, and I would open it up for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam First Select Woman. Um, Representative Vergara?
Uh, thank you, Madam Moderator, and thank you so much, First Select Woman, Cupchik, that was really extremely helpful, and, um, those were all the questions I was going to ask. Um, I did want to see if there was a specific number that could be given for the amount of people who expressed interest, um, and how many people were interviewed, and I think that's a question for Mr. Hazelcamp.
Well, I answered that in my, uh, statement. We have thirty-one people who-
Oh, thirty-one, okay, I'm sorry.
I, I, yeah, and I went through the process of why we determined or calculated why we think it's twenty-three based on who actually came in and sat down for long periods of time or several meetings with the benefit manager, to actually go through the Medicare calculations and such, as opposed to someone who just dropped off their name and didn't have a meeting or asked for any of their calculations.
Okay, thank you. So that, that number is thirty-one, I didn't catch that, and thank you very much for reiterating.
Uh, Representative Gerber?
Yeah, thank you, um, thank you, First Select Woman, that was very helpful. Um, and, but, but, um, there, there, there are some reporting things that are very important to me, and, um, and I figure if, uh, we're voting on this, we're voting on this tonight, this is the time to get a commitment, because there won't be a better time than this. So, um, these were some of the questions in, um, that were submitted by Representative Vergara last week, and I just wanted some specific, you know, commitments from you, if you don't mind, and I'm gonna read through them. Um, one was, if approved, can you commit to providing the RTM a report from the actuary? Um, I wrote, um, within one month of the final employee acceptance of the V-RIP, but, uh, if that's not possible, let me know, but I think it's probably possible since the evaluation was done, so it's just a matter of the actuary pulling out the actual, you know, acceptances and compiling the number, uh, and reporting it to us, and then adding in the, um, upfront deposit. So, within a month, can you commit to providing the final, uh, number?
So Representative, just to be clear, you just want to know who takes it, or how many took it, and their-
Yeah, so it'd be who, how many, you know, who, I mean, uh, not the names, but, you know, who took it, and so the, you know, the actuary has the, has used the twenty-three numbers to calculate, uh, this, the five point nine million, but those, those numbers are gonna change when, when they're actual, and, uh, maybe not, you know, so if it's not, the, the actuary can just say, no, it's the twenty-three, and the number's five point nine million, assuming that those numbers won't be exactly the same, I'd like to see at the final number for the, the, uh, discounted cost plus the, um, the deposit, the upfront deposit.
Oh, okay, I, yeah, Bill, that seems completely reasonable, because then we'll have the actual hard number to be able to give you, and we're happy to give that to the actuary and then bring that back, or send that information back to everyone.
Right, right, and, and the se- um, the, the second one, which is actually, uh, question number three on the list, can you provide, um, the, um, the act- the employee positions and the salary and age of each employee, uh, for those who ultimately accept, uh, and, and, and provide that to us as well? Um, and, I, I, you know, I, I, there, there was also, part of that question was, um, you know, to identify the three positions, but you just explained that the three positions aren't necessarily V-RIP acceptance positions, so I, I think that can be deleted from the request.
Right. I think we should be able to give you that minus the ages, because I think that might be, uh, violation, um, but I think the, the rest of, we should be able to.
The, the people who accept, is that not potentially public information? Is that, for some reason, is that, is that private?
Wouldn't be public, I mean, it would be public as in to, you know, you know that, say, Joan Ryan, uh, you know, retired, or Linda Gardner, but, um, we, we, there's some HR issues that I'm being told that-
Okay.
Put in.
Okay. Now, now, the reason I'm asking all this is, and I think, you know, Jim Hazelcamp has said this, that like basically, from what he said, n- no one's ever provided, you know, there, there've been plenty of V-RIPS done in the state, and no one's ever actually analyzed them and, and afterwards, and provided an assessment of whether, of the cost and whether they met the objective, so that, that's why this is so important to me. So the next question is, um, if approved, can you commit to providing the RTM no later than September, uh, twenty twenty-one, a presentation that includes at a minimum the following: details of the town hall restructuring, at least at the state, uh, at the current state at that time of, of the town, of, of your plans. That would be A. B was the list of the positions vacated through the V-RIP that had been filled, and the actual salary differential, um, so that we know what it was versus the, um, projections.
Yeah, a lot of this will be part of the budget process, Bill, um, because we, well, I'm ho- you know, obviously, I spoke, I think, about this at the last meeting, I hadn't started my budget building yet because I was waiting for this to happen, because this is gonna be an integral part on how we build, and this will come out during the budget, a lot of this information, but I, I would imagine I should be able to report a good amount of it to, back to the RTM, probably even before September, but a lot of this, I think, will be realized in the budget process.
Great, great, and again, the reason is that V-RIPS have been done, everyone says, oh, we do these, but no one's ever actually gone back, revisited the assumptions and compared actuals to assumptions. Apparently, I think Jim has mentioned that, so that's why this is, we're very keen to see this, maybe we'll be trailblazers in this aspect if it gets passed. Um, the next one was, um, um, well, the list of, uh, which positions were vacated through the, the V-RIP were eliminated, I, I think we can scratch that, um, if, um, you're not committing to eliminating V-RIP-related positions. Then, um, and then the, the, uh, probably the most important is, um, the status of implementation of best practice HR practices and the procedures versus the current state of what Jim Hazelcamp has described as the worst I had ever seen. Now, this should include job, you know, the status of job description updates across all departments, performance reviews, employee file updates, prompt notifications, you know, disciplinary actions, union discussions when needed, et cetera, and the reason I'm asking this is I think we've all, many of us have expressed, um, at least on, on, on the Democratic caucus side of things, that, you know, we all along questioned whether we were putting the cart before the horse, whether or not we should be putting these best practices in place first, and going slow and steady to actually make, uh, the transition to new employees possible through these new HR practices. Um, I think you expressed the, um, the trepidation that, you know, that it wouldn't necessarily be possible or not, not ideal to try to do that without the new people in place that you need, the new people in place to actually get that ball rolling efficiently. I, I believe that's, that's what I heard. So can you, um, can you present to us, um, I would, I would, you know, by September, you know, the status of the best practice implementation in HR, or where we stand on all those issues?
Yes, and I, um, you know, a- as you said, Bill, I, I felt that this was, you know, based on my conversation, uh, with our HR director, who knows a lot more about this sort of thing than, than I do, I just knew we needed something, I knew we needed some big changes here, and so the training and the changes of policies and the protocols and all of that, that is all part of this. This is all going to be done together, and obviously, it's gonna take a little bit of time, you know, to implement those trainings, to get them, uh, obviously with COVID, it makes it a little bit more tricky, um, it's so much easier to get it to happen in a room. But we have put these, I think I mentioned this, um, during some of the meetings, that we have had our reorganization meetings with each of the departments, because we wanted to be able to hit the ground running if this, when and if this passed, and we want to be prepared, but obviously, we didn't know, and we don't still know exactly who those people are, because that's confidential, uh, but we'll be able to at least move quicker. In the holiday season, we were hoping this was gonna pass a little earlier so we would have a little time, and it's hard to hire, uh, during the holidays, but, and build a budget at once, but I'm, I'm thinking we are up for the challenge, and I would love to report, uh, how we're doing with all of that, the changes that we're making for our government and how our policies and procedures will change.
Can, can you commit to, to making a report to us before the end of September?
I, Bill, I don't exactly, oh, I don't want to make a commitment, I can't keep, because there's gonna be a lot of, of different pieces moving, I mean, hiring new staff, reorganizing the government, building the budget, dealing with the day-to-day operations that happen here, the fill pile, and obviously, um, you know, the, the pentness, the ongoing criminal investigation, there's a lot going on around here, um, so I, I will commit to, to doing these things, but I don't know if I'll be able to do them by September, I might be able to do them sooner, but I'm-
No, not, not do them, but-
Because there may be, there may, for example, just be like a first phase of things we do the first few months, and then there's other things we continue to do to build upon those things.
I, I think that's really what I'm asking is, is to report on the status, so, you know, at the plan and the status at that time, and, and, you know, and I think there's a reasonable concern, you know, um, that, you know, we've done, we actually did a V-RIP in two thousand and nine, and from what any of us know, nothing really changed after that, so just a com- a, a commitment from you to report on the status of these initiatives by September, not that these initiatives will be completed.
Absolutely, no, I agree, and I think that there was a different intent in two thousand and nine in this, um, one, so it's, it's probably just a little different.
Okay, thank you, you've answered my questions, thanks.
Thank, thank you, Rep- Thank, thank you, Representative.
Uh, Representative Miss Tilly?
Uh, hi, uh, Madam Moderator, through you, I'd like to, um, ask a few questions to, uh, Madam Select Woman.
Yes, please do.
Uh, hi, Brenda.
Hi, Sharon.
Just so, oh, I'm sorry, I should announce myself, oh, no, you, you introduced me, sorry, um, okay, so I have a few questions, so I didn't, like, I read through the documentation that we had gotten originally, and I didn't see anywhere that we were notified that there were thirty-one people who said yes, as opposed to twenty-three? Was, so, was that not in the original documentation?
Right, as I had mentioned, um, earlier, uh, that in the mem- memorandum, and I, I apologize, because I think people misunderstood, we were trying to give the RTM, um, based on the prior, uh, feedback, that there was too much of a range, too much of a range, people kind of couldn't get their hands around it, so when we went back with the second iteration, we asked for people, the HR director changed sort of the rules of engagement, not only did we, um, change the plan details, but we, he also said to the unions, you have to, you have to put your name in by this date, or you have no chance of even participating, and based on that, and in the memorandum that I sent, and I read this earlier, we said that the financial analysis reflects our estimates, based on, and I was talking before about our benefits manager and her conversations with employees, or lack thereof, conversations led her to believe that the thirty-one really was going to be more of a, of a twenty-three, based on her conversations, confidential conversations with employees.
Okay, so in that case, I think it would have been fair to have the thirty-one be a max calculation for us and let us know, because I think it's really a big deal that we, I, based on what I had interpreted, I thought the twenty-three were the people who said they were going to do it based on the questionnaire.
Right, so when we gave a range, when we gave a range in the beginning, a lot of people didn't like the range, they thought it was too, and so, but doing it this way, it really is much more, um, accurate, based on the discussions with the benefits manager, so while thirty-one did put their names in, again, like I mentioned earlier, some of those thirty-one dropped their name and never talked to the benefits manager or asked for any calculations at all, and then based on the conversation.
Right, but I think...
Confidential conversations.
But I think it, I think it would have been fair to have thirty-one be the max, so we didn't like the range of, you know, twenty-two to fifty-four, I, I, I can't remember the exact numbers, but you know what I'm talking about, I think it would have been more fair to provide us twenty-three to thirty-one, and I guess my next question is, of the thirty-one, how many are early and how many are normal?
It's in the memo that we sent out in December.
Um, I don't have it in front of me, is it possible to tell me?
I don't have the full memo, do you? I just have the front page I was referring to.
Is it this memo? The one that sent back to us like in a PDF?
Um, the one that says memorandum, men- memorandum to RTM members from Hazelcamp.
I have to apologize, because I have many things, but that I don't have.
Do you have it?
Oh, I see it, I found it, I found it, sorry.
Right, so out of all the thirty-one, based on the, the confidential conversation the benefit manager had with employees, she believed that twenty-three, and of those, um, it was, um, seventeen normal and six early.
Right, but of the thirty-one, of the thirty-one, how many are early and how many are normal, that's what we need to know.
I don't have the whole thing in front of me, I'm sorry, it wasn't a backup.
Yeah, but the issue now is that we have thirty-one people who could take it, and if it's possible that it's seven plus, seven plus seven, seven plus eight, fifteen people that could be early retirement, we're looking at a huge liability, now we don't know the answer to that, so I just did a little quick math, so we assumed that for twenty-three people, that the cost was five point nine million, but that only accounts for seventy-seven percent of the people saying yes, and if a hundred percent of the thirty-one say yes, and you gross that number up, and you assume the same mix of early to regular retirement, you get to eight million, so that's kind of a big difference, and so we kind of need to know the answer to how many could be early, because that's our maximum liability.
No, I understand that, uh, Representative, but at the same time, um, the confidential conversations that the benefit manager had with employees, um...
I understand, but you provided that to us with an estimate on the twenty-three, so even if you fudged it a little, so we had a, a good understanding on the thirty-one, that would be a ha- a helpful maximum goalpost, I understand that, we need, we should have been provided that information.
Right, but I think, at the same time, I, I thought the RTM was asking us for more, uh, realistic and concrete dated basis decision on, and it, it doesn't seem like, um, it just didn't seem, it, it's sort of a fault, like, somebody was saying during some of the other meetings, that we were over, um, saying that it was going to cost more than it really actually was, and so if, if, if only twenty-three, or maybe twenty-four employees really went out of their way, this is a big deal when you're retiring, you don't just put your name in and then, you know, walk in and say, okay, I'm ready to retire, without getting, filling out a Medicare form, uh, getting, one of the indicators is, um, people who are serious about retiring will actually get a calculation about their healthcare, which is vitally important, right, to their decision-making, and to not even ask for it, my benefits, our benefits managers said, it is highly, highly unlikely someone is taking, uh, put their name in and is serious to ask. You, you know, this is your retirement, and this is your future, and you obviously, uh, need to know what you're going to be getting, uh, before you elect, and the time period is so crunched after this, it is, um, per, you know, whatever thirty-five, or how many years Cheryl has been here, her belief that someone who hasn't even asked for a single calculation, or even sat down for a two-minute meeting, was seriously considering, uh, taking the time.
I, I understand that, but I think it's still exposed, and I think it's kind of a big deal that it wasn't made clear to us, because now we feel like we're in the last minute making a decision on something where, like, there was information that was known that we weren't provided, so my next question is, um...
Yeah, I was going to say, Sharon, that I, you know, I do pledge, and I have continued to say, that I own this, and I will take full responsibility, um, the goal was always to be as accurate as possible, and I have committed, uh, no matter what, that this will be budget neutral, and that I commit to that.
Unfortunately, I, I think that there's so many inputs that go into it, that, you know, while you pledge it, it, it might come to a point of, you know, having to cut services if it, if it doesn't come out the way we thought with these unknowns, so that's my concern. My next question is, um, what's, uh, I didn't have the opportunity to, like, pull these union contracts, but I wanted to know, like, what the typical movement is from step to step, so like, for the, so for one union, the people who come in and the cost savings, we assume they're going to be step one, and for another union, we assume they're going to be step three, what are the movements from step to step on a yearly basis, back of envelope?
Jim is here, he, he doesn't really understand the question as it pertains to the program.
What's the, what's the percent, what's the percent base salary range from, like, to move from one step to the up, the next step in the contract, what's the percentage change from one step to the next?
Yeah, there, so just so you're clear, they're all annual increments, and they're all different across different states, so I don't have the standard, uh, that, I know that the, uh, PVA union has much bigger percentages between their steps, uh, and I don't know off the top of my head the percentages between the other, but they're all different.
But back of envelope, ba- based on your experience, can you give me a, an estimate, since you've been doing this a long time?
No, because it has nothing to do with my experience, it really has to do with what's been negotiated in the past, but for example, my experience would, I would never guess what we do with PETA, because I don't really understand the ranges in PETA, they're very large, and the percentages between steps are very large, you know, in a typical contract, it would be, in a typical contract, it's typically three to five percent between steps, but I can't tell you that's what these are off the top of my head.
Yeah, that's okay, that's what I was looking for, and does everybody, do people move up one step per year?
Yeah, it's on the anniversary date.
Okay, and when you guys did the cost saving, you said that people, that there'd be a salary differential, but did you include the fact that in year one, somebody would be step one, or replacement, and then in year two, the replacement would be on step two, and then in year three, the replacement would be on step three?
If I follow your question.
Okay, so you know how in the, in the cost savings, you know the cost savings?
Yeah.
You know the cost savings?
Okay.
How it was the same number, year after year after year, the three forty that goes all the way across the page? Did you see what I'm, can you see what I'm holding, I'm sorry, I wish I had a whiteboard, you know what I'm talking about, the three forty, six twenty, so, in that, we haven't included, this looks like, the salary savings looks like a rectangle to me, or a straight line, and the salary savings should be an inverse line, that goes down over time, because if you hire somebody in at step one, next year, they're making three to five percent more, and in, in year two, they're making three to five percent more, year three, they're making, until they get to the top, so we're assuming that the people who are retiring are at their top step, right, and they're only getting the structure movement, the structure adjustment or cost of living adjustment, they're not getting any more step movement, but the people who replace them get step movement every year, so unfortunately, I didn't get the answers to my questions, like, I understand that you guys don't know the retirement age, but I was hoping for an estimate, because I don't think that the salary savings is a rec- is a straight line, it's an inverse line, and I didn't get enough information to be able to model that on my own, I think that the two major things that are missing here are the step movements year over year, which is, you know, three to five percent per incumbent, and when you're talking seventeen thousand dollars per incumbent savings, you know, three to five percent is going to get eaten up in, I don't know, four or five years, I can't even model it right now, so I don't think that the savings go beyond five years because of the movement that we would expect to happen within the steps. Um, I guess my next question is, were you able to go back and benchmark any of the position?
Representative Miss Tilly?
Yeah.
Can I interrupt you for a second? I'm wondering if I could go, there's a few other people who want to ask questions.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I wonder if I could go to them, and we, we can go back to you, because if, if we need to, but I just wanted to give some people a chance, if that's okay.
Sorry about that.
Um, Rep- Representative Ringel, I'm sorry, Representative, um, Odenak first.
Thanks, Meredith Odenak, District Four, um, through you, Madam Moderator, I have a question for, uh, for Select Woman, Cupcake? Um, okay, so whether this plan is passed or not, do you have plans to develop employee trainings in order to develop skills that you consider part of a modernized town government? So, this is kind of your first step, but I, I'm really not hearing, like, more in-depth, how do you plan to modernize how the, how the town is running, so, what, the skills of the employees, whether this passes or after this passes?
I'm sorry, Representative, a lot of your comments were garbled, I didn't hear the last part of it.
Uh, so whether this plan passes or not, do you have plans to develop employee trainings in order to develop skills that you consider part of a modernized town government?
Yes, absolutely, I talked about that earlier, um, we met with all the departments, and all, well, e- even before we met with the departments, when Mr. Hazelcamp came on board, and, um, I believe I talked about this over some other meetings, uh, with the RTM, when I first started talking about this plan, and he just talked about how there were not really any procedures or protocols in place, our, um, our managers hadn't been invested in with managerial training, there was no accountability for people who, you know, did something wrong, there was no, uh, there were no, uh, disciplinary actions in anyone's files, which, you know, out of five hun- you know, well, how many employees work for the town, not to have any written up, so these are trainings that our HR director shared with me, are typically normal trainings that other towns do with their employees, their managers, and with each of their departments, so part of it is, is what, we've been working on rewriting job descriptions, obviously, once, if this passes, we'll be able to know which ones are leaving, and so then we can rewrite job descriptions to meet the needs of the departments, where we believe they are lacking, based on being here this past year, and watching these departments very closely, as well as getting a lot of feedback from our residents and our business owners who interact with our departments and our town government, and you can pretty much paint the picture and see where you need to make these changes. The trainings that, uh, Jim Hazelcamp shared with me, that he has either taught, or has, um, seen happen in other towns, are things we are going to bring here, not just for our managers and our, which are department heads, but also, um, for our, our staff, our employees, all of our employees. Part of it also would be, um, you know, we've looked at, when I was talking about, we met with the departments regarding, um, reorganization, you know, you see where some departments might need different skill sets, or a different sort of staff person as opposed to what they currently have, whereas other departments may not need exactly what they have right now, so there are things that we need to do in that case, as far as reorganizing goes, but we also will be hiring people who can implement the technology that we're going to implement as part of reorganization, so there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle, um, but to be rest assured, I have full intentions, and I, I honestly wouldn't have put so much time and effort into this, and believe me, it's been a lot of work for myself and my administration, uh, to get this here, if I didn't have the intention of really, um, making a difference, a huge difference, for everyone who utilizes the services in this town, or interacts with our town government.
So, if, if this plan doesn't pass, do you plan to move forward with those trainings in terms of, uh, managerial trainings, and rewriting some job descriptions in case you're able to, um, shift things moving forward, maybe not necessarily right now, but in a few years, um, or other trainings for skill development for current employees?
So, we had already, uh, started to schedule, uh, trainings for employees, uh, right before COVID hit, and we had to, uh, cancel them.
So, it sounds like, even if this doesn't pass, you're already moving forward with this kind of modernization training, hopefully, once COVID cert- moves forward, or you can move through that, but it sounds like, uh, you are moving forward with this kind of moderniz- modernization training?
Correct, so, for example, um, once the VRIF passes, and there's the flexibility of vacant positions, it's much easier to eliminate or add to a job description, um, it's typically very difficult to rewrite a job description someone was currently hired under, and then, um, expect them to now perform a job that they weren't hired to do, and I think there becomes union issues with that, and so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Ringel? Marissa? I don't know if she can hear.
Can, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm wondering if you can hear in the phone, okay, am I, am I echoing?
No.
Okay, um, thank you, Madam Moderator, and, um, Representative Ringel, District Ten, speaking, um, I just wanted to comment that, um, as a body, the RTM's been meeting on this for months, um, many, many hours, uh, many, many documents have come into our email, we've had lots to read, there's been many great questions... We've had lots to read. There's been many great questions, um, many good probes. Um, we've had a lot of information on this one topic, more than, more than any other topic that I've seen, um, issues since I've been part of the RTM. And, um, there's been productivity that has come out of that. Um, however, I think we're starting to cross the line where the RTM's becoming inefficient in the sense that we're, we seem to be, um, heading towards a place of micromanaging our first selectwoman as a body. And, um, that has its own risk of us being inefficient. And I just wanted to throw in support for the, um, first selectman, for the, first selectwoman's, um, what, her package that she's put together with the union and the other employees. This balances the hard decisions of the, of running the town in terms of human capital with a compassionate, dignified approach, um, that honors our employees' services that they've already put into our town. And we're not going to know all the answers of how this is going to shake out. And that's why we have to, we have to trust the other branches of our town. Um, and there's also some value that we can't quantify right now, which is, if we treat, treat the employees with this compassionate package, which is an excellent deal, I'm, I'd be happy for any employee that's able to get this deal, um, that our, our reputation as a town employer is going to be positive because we're going to be known as a town that treats our employees very well. That helps draw, draw in talent from other towns and other, um, corporations. Um, we're going to be able to revitalize our town services enthusiastically as we seek to hire current relevant skill sets that were, were, that are able to keep up with current technology and best practices in HR. We're going to be able to pivot the town services to a future-facing capabilities to service town residents and businesses, schools, in a more timely and more efficient manner with an overall better quality of experience for all that come to get service from our town. Um, and I just wanted to add that, to, to make change for the better, we often have to spend money to make money. Um, I've been taught that by many business people. And also, time is money. Um, the more we're not moving forward, the more we're staying still, the more that costs the town in terms of change for the positive. And I just hope that you will join me in, um, supporting Brenda and the people of our town that want this package. Thanks. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Representative Wolk?
Hi. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Hi. Um, so Jay Wolk, District Five. Uh, through you, Madam Moderator, to our first selectwoman, Brenda Cupcheck. I have a question, um, for Brenda. Is she there?
Okay. Yeah.
I'm here.
Hey Brenda. Um, I'm just wondering, you know, it's been, you know, I know this has been a long process of what everybody's been going through. And I kind of take back what I just heard from Representative Ringel about, um, being micromanaged and, you know, the, that's what the RTM is, is becoming. But anyway, not to get into all of that, my question is to you, is why didn't this all go to the Board of Selectmen's office and then to the Board of Finance office? I mean, to the Board of Finance and then to us? I, I've never seen this before in, in 10 years that I've been on the RTM. So this is a little bit weird for me. I, you know, forgive me if, um, you know, I, I just don't understand it. So maybe you can highlight, you know, some of the reasons why?
It's the statute. It's according to the statute. I think I described it when we first started this conversation back in early September. It's, it's the statute, Jay, that it doesn't go anywhere but before the legislative body of the town. And the RTM is the legislative body.
But usually, everything goes through the two other boards before it comes to us to vote on this.
Right. So this is like a union, so what it is, was explained to me, this is a union contract and the RTM approves union contracts. And that's, this is what this is. Um, like all union agreements, you just did the teacher's contract. It didn't go to the Board of Finance and it didn't go to the Board of Selectmen. It only went to you. And you've, you've approved quite a few contracts over your many years. And I did as well when I was on the RTM. And they never went to the Board of Selectmen or, uh, the Board of Finance. And I believe the, uh, county attorney is on the line if you need a legal interpretation. But that's the way it was told to me by the county attorney when we first started this process.
Okay, that works for me. But, um, you know, going forward on this whole process, that, what I'm feeling right now, um, is, is in the long run, and what, what, you know, you can't, you don't have a crystal ball what's going to happen years from now, Brenda, you know, of, of, you know, what the town can benefit from all of this? Or, or the town cannot benefit from all this. And then it falls back onto the taxpayers, which none of us want to, 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 to get to that point. So for me, it's just, um, I'm just feeling all this is happening so fast, including what's going on with the pandemic and what you're dealing with, that and the pile that you're dealing with. And, and all these things that you're dealing with, I feel that, you know, why is this have to happen right now? Why is this happening all, you know, right at the end of the year? Why, why didn't it happen next year or towards budget season? I, you know, so that's all I'm feeling. I, I thank you for all the work that you have done. We've all recognized that. Um, so, um, you know, thank you very much. And I'm done, Karen. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Representative Garscoff?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, this is Josh Garscoff, District Five. I, I just had a clarifying question through you, Madam Moderator, to the first selectwoman, if that's okay?
Sure.
I think I heard, but I may have misheard, so I want to clarify. I believe, um, we, when discussing the three positions that you're, um, confirming you won't refill, I think I heard you say earlier tonight that they might not be VERIP positions. Did I hear that right?
Right. So I think what I thought was the question was from the RTM was to, will they be VERIP positions? And so, for example, um, I just wanted to clarify that we wouldn't, I think somebody may have said offline or at a meeting, um, would, would you try to eliminate an unfunded position that's currently in the budget but isn't funded? And I said, no, I'm not. And I thought that's what the question was. So for example, if the 23 people, right, they take it and say, one of those positions, um, is now, say, pushed into another position. So the position that may consequently not be part of the VERIP could be eliminated because now you have a more robust job description for one of the V-RIP positions that are, that has been vacated. So for example, um, just like I said, we could, we could make the V-RIP position that's eliminated more robust with a more robust job description, which is now takes the place of another position. Or there's a bump or a move from another department. So typically, I just wanted to be really clear, it's not unfunded positions. We wouldn't be eliminating those. And most likely, yes, they would be V-RIP. But if the reorganization works in a way where it's not just V-RIP. At that, I know it sounds confusing.
No, that was very helpful. Thank you. So, uh, but, um, at first I was thinking you were saying, yeah, we might just, I, I, that does help me. But, but how does that, um, to Representative Gerber's point earlier of figuring, in retrospect, looking back at this in the future, if it was to pass, how would you track that? Would that be something you would be able to even figure out in the tracking of the effectiveness of this financially?
Yes, absolutely. We could track all of that, Josh. And we will.
Okay. Okay. That seems like a, a, it could be a, a hard one to pin down if it's a position that wasn't one of the VERIP positions that is, is not replaced. But, but I, I do appreciate you said that.
Now, I'll be fairly transparent. And I promise, I, I, I promise and pledge to each of you right now, I will not manipulate any of the data. You will get exactly what we're doing. And I will share it with you and with our residents.
Thank you.
Representative Altobelli?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Moderator. And through you, uh, to our first selectwoman, Brenda Cupcheck. Uh, one, I thank you wholeheartedly for your complete and absolute commitment to everything you have been doing and trying to do. Um, I know all of us on the RTM do, are very impressed. And I speak to so many people in the community from a bipartisan, you know, approach. And they say, I love her transparency. I think her ideas are fabulous. You know, so far, you've been hit with a lot, as we know. Um, so I just wanted to say that. Also, I do have a question I'm getting there. Um, I also, I actually think, Representative Bill Gerber, your, I support and I liked your idea of the check-in in September. I think that's awesome. I mean, it's prudent. I think it'll give us an update. I think that makes sense. And, you know, it's your plan. I know you plan to do a lot of good things. So, you know, as the RTM, we also want to see the, the assessment and evaluation. So that's fabulous. I do have, um, a question, uh, for Selectwoman. You, you mentioned that, you know, there's, there's been complaints. We know that. I know that. I'm in the town hall. I'm in the community, as are so many of us. And, you know, I, I don't look for these complaints, but people tell me, I, I'm in, you know, a, a business. Um, I deal and sell with the town departments, or I'm sorry, sell with residents. Um, and, you know, I deal with zoning and building departments. And my clients, um, I know, go through an inordinate amount of wasted time. And I'm just wondering if there are records of complaints at all? Or are there anything, you know, that you have that would be helpful? Um, you know, that, that is prudent, or I don't know, that's even allowed to be, you know, um, told to us? I don't know if that makes sense. But, you know, are there any things that you have that could, um, you know, make it a little more clear? Because, I mean, I could voice many, many, many from residents dealing with the town departments. And I know this is your first step in trying to get us to a better level and to support the town of Fairfield, who's one of the most, you know, financially, uh, you, uh, great towns. That, that didn't make sense completely. But, you know, we're, we're one of the, I think, top five in Fairfield County. So we need to reflect that. So my question, it goes back to where, I mean, are there these complaints? Are not, where are they coming from? Um, maybe can you shed some more light on that? Just because I know we've talked about that up and down, but we haven't really drilled down, you know, so much. Um, and I thought you know best because you've now seen this for quite some time.
So thank you, Representative. Um, I, I just want to first off by saying that I don't want anyone to get the impression that we don't have some very good employees that work for our town. Because we do. We really do. Um, customer service is a bit of an issue. And, um, I would say that in the beginning, uh, when I took over, very soon after, I sent a memo out to all our, uh, employees about what my expectations were from each and every one of them, uh, how the public is treated, how people are to answer the telephone, um, and things of that nature. Um, so I don't personally think it's appropriate for me to share complaints that come in uh, through email or through phone. Those are people's personal, uh, communications to me. Um, but they have given me a very, um, crystal clear picture as, in addition to my interactions with the department over the past year. You know, building a budget last year, going to the department. I don't sit in my office. I get up and go and walk around. Um, and so, you know, you see, you see things and, uh, you know, again, Elizabeth, I think everything can be better, right? And so I think there hasn't ever been a real concerted effort. And like Jay said earlier, you know, why are you doing all this here? So you got all these other things on your plate. And he's right. I mean, you know, it's, it's, I get it. But I'm not the kind that really sits back. It's not ever been my nature to do that. And so I see a problem and I know we can fix it. And so instead of sitting back and waiting till it's an easier time, there's less on my plate, I don't ever think there's going to be less, um, on my plate. So, you know, to me, the time is now. And so I want to deliver for residents. I don't want to wait years down the line. And I, I wanted to do it. I know it's been difficult and it's going to be difficult. This is going to put a tremendous amount of pressure on me and my administration. We have a lot of work to do. But we're, we're actually, we're actually excited about it because, you know, it's transforming something and there's some value in that. You know, you feel excited when you have a challenge that you're able to get a hold of and do it and then see an amazing result for your community. And, and we are energized. We, we know we have a lot of work, but we're excited to do it. And we're trying to build work for Fairfield.
I know. I know. I thank you so much for that info. Uh, and, um, I, one more, just comment. I know that you, you know, uh, honed in on the number of serious inquiries. So, you know, that was also, uh, I appreciate that. And I know most of us do on the RTM as well. So hopefully that, the serious 23 that you did mention. So, anyway, going forward, that's very helpful. And, um, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Representative Monahan?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I just want to say that I share the sentiment of Representative Ringel and also of, um, Representative Altobelli. Um, and I do believe fundamentally that Brenda is cleaning up a lot of neglect and corruption and also trying to really do her best to restructure our town for the next century. So it's not, I, I know a lot of people who work for this town. It's a wonderful place to live. It's a wonderful place to work. But I also think that when it, when the taxpayer, um, is questioned and they read the newspaper, they say, what's going on down there? And can we fix it? So I appreciate everything you're doing, Brenda. Um, do I think that, you know, um, it's really hard? Yeah, I, I think it's incredibly hard. And I, and I don't know where you get the time or the energy or the passion because even watching it, it's exhausting. So I just want to say thank you for your energy and for your passion and for doing, you're doing in a bipartisan way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Representative Haiti?
For music.
Hi. Thank you. I'm sorry. I thought I heard speaking. Oh, you're echoing.
Maybe this is better? How's that?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, sorry about that. I, um, have a question through, um, Madam Moderator, to, um, first selectwoman Cupcheck.
And, okay.
Um, first of all, I'd like to say how happy I am to see the initiatives being put forward to modernize Town Hall. Um, it's been years and years and years, and it's just never seemed to make it to the top of the taxpayer acceptance list. And I really love seeing it, um, playing out and being put forward. I do have a really serious grave concern. I'm concerned that this initiative, um, will not ever really be budget neutral. Um, I'm confident that when you put forth this budget through the, uh, first selectman's budget, it will be budget neutral. Um, however, given the fact that we're facing a $10, $11 million cliff and then the actions that the Board of Finance might take to reduce, um, that budget neutral budget, um, then it moves on to the RTM. And, and I'm only speaking for just this next budget cycle. This initiative is years and years and years going forward, um, as it'll affect the finances of Fairfield. And I just would like to hear from you precisely how you plan on keeping it budget neutral. And what, what you see as a possible, um, services that, um, will no longer be needed in this town in order to keep this a budget neutral service. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative. So, um, in the, in the handout that we had given, the, um, the VERIP II handout, when we go across the 10-year budget impact, most people tell me you really can't accurately, um, talk about things after five or six years, you know, their impact. But if you remember, uh, we are, and the actuaries did this. But if you remember, uh, we are, and the actuaries did this information. So, we're looking at 163,000 in savings in the first year, and then 263 in the second, 276 in the third, and 290, and then so on and so forth, 305, 350. So, we are saying that even if there are some changes, we're still going to have a saving. Um, what, budget neutral, whatever cliffs, um, whatever cliffs are, are in the budget from last year has no relevance on this, right? So, you're going to have them regardless of the VARIP anyway. Uh, we're going to have to have budget discussions just based on some of the policies, maybe that, and perceptions of how budgeting should go. Now, I will build my budget based on this. Now, if there is some, uh, variation of this, but I am showing the savings, and this has been looked at by the actuaries. And so, what I'm saying to you is that that's how I'll build my budget. Now, how the budget process works then? If the, the Board of Finance does other things in the budget that have anything to do with my VARIP plan, that's a totally different discussion, right? A different conversation about budgeting. Because we have paid for this plan based on all the data that we gave and the actuarial calculation. And my budget will be built with these savings or neutral going forward. So, I can commit to that, because that is my budget and how I put it forward. And I do not intend at all, I mean, we got through a budget process last year with everything we had, and produced a 0% tax increase, and didn't cut a single service to anyone. So, it can be done. We can do it, and we will do it. And I committed to doing it.
I, I've heard that in the 20-some years I've been following budgets in Fairfield. And I just wish that it was true. I wish that it wasn't, um, this pocket over here gets to keep all their money, and this pocket over here gets to keep all their money. At the end of the day, it's the Fairfield General Fund, and it gets spread out. So, I don't see where, um, this VERP is going to keep budget neutral and not have an effect on the town. I, I've just never seen that, um, come to fruition before with any project. Um, take paving, for instance. I mean, it just never has come through. Um, I want it to. Um, but I think, uh, budget concerns and budget cuts and budgets going forwards and what taxpayers see at the end of the day is, um, sorry, is, is, is where I have deep concerns. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Representative Vergara.
Thank you. Jill Vergara, District 7. I just have a couple more questions through you, Madam Moderator, to Mr. Schmidt. Um, I just received a sheet that I had never seen before from a Board of Finance member. It's from the CAFER. Um, it's a draft audited financial statement as of June 30th, 2020. And it reflects pension numbers showing that the plan has dropped to 78%. That's already that we've dropped below 80%. Um, and we were at 86% just last year. So, I wanted to see, I wanted to confirm with you that this is accurate. I, I'm looking at the statement right now, so I just, I know that you're the CFO, and I think that you should be involved in, um, assessing this and verifying that this is accurate information. And I wanted to see how the VARIP is going to further exacerbate this, and what this means for these, this number to drop below 80%. So, currently at 78%. What the VARIP will do go, going forward to exacerbate that, and what it means to be below 80%.
So, Representative Vergara, I'm actually on the pension board as well. Did that, is there, did that come from the pension board?
Um, I believe it was from one of the audited financial statements.
Is there a member of the pension board on the call tonight?
I think that all of the members of the Board of Finance received this, because it was from the audited financial statement.
From the pension board, though?
Um...
You're talking about the pension, correct?
It, it, this was specific to the pension, yes. It's about the total pension liability currently.
Because I just...
As of June 30th, 2020.
We just had a presentation of the pension board, I believe it was last week, um, where we were looking very good. But there's nobody on the pension board to speak to any of this? Because we've outlined what the impact in our, um, in our information, based on the actuaries, obviously, this has had full vetting by the actuaries, the pension board, everyone. And, and we show pretty clearly what we believe our impact on VARIP shows, how much it's going to impact the pension.
Yeah. It's from the CAFER, and it, it, it was sent to the Audit Committee on the Board of Finance. Um, I, I'm, I'm so sorry, because I don't know a lot about this stuff either, but that, those numbers are concerning, and, um, it reflects serious risk in my mind. So, I would just like some clarification. And, um, yeah, I, I thought Mr. Schmidt would be the person who could address this.
Yeah, he could. I just, I'm trying to understand why the pension, I mean, this is odd. We, we gave what the impact is on the pension on our program, and how that impacts, how the, how the pension moves up and down. I mean, that's really more of a pension board thing, and, and that we discuss as a pension board, and as I am a member of. But, uh, I'll let Mr. Schmidt come up and try to address the question for you.
Do you have, I don't have, I don't see the document or the page. Do you have a page number in the CAFER?
Uh, that's, I'm asking, but, um, so I was sent the page, but not, it doesn't show, it doesn't show the page number. Um, ew. Um, if you need the page, maybe I should wait until they can get back to me about the page number, um, and, uh, maybe I go on to a different question. I...
So, can I, can I answer it maybe in a different, not related to that, until I see that information? But I know that when we, um, in the first go-around, uh, we had, had the actuaries run some numbers, the first plan, our first VARIP plan. And it showed a, uh, in the, in the situation where it was 50% of people taking it, it would drop just above, it would be just above 80%. And so, this one is, uh, a little bit more than, uh, it's about 60% in terms of the liability. It's about 60% of that amount. So, I wouldn't expect it to drop below 81%, even as a result of, even as a result of this. It's going to, it would drop a little bit, but not, uh, not significantly.
But this reporting statement, it's an audited statement, and it says that we're already under 80%. We're at 78% funding, whereas last...
I know there's a...
Last year, we were at 86%.
I know that there's a draft audited statement. And if you could get me a page number, I could probably help me through this.
Um, yeah, I, I think it's the draft, the draft from June 30th.
Of this year?
Yes, that's how I understand it. Um, the schedules start on page 97 of the CAFER. Yes.
I don't know if this helps. Representative McCormick, um, said this is a report to the Audit Committee of the Board of Finance as of June 30th, 2020.
So, I'm just, I'm looking through the pages right now, trying to see what you're looking at. I... Okay, so that's police and fire? So, this would have no impact on police and fire?
Madam Moderator, Representative Iacono, point of order. Would it be possible for this question to be sidelined, please? Um, i- is it absolutely relevantly germane to voting this evening for, to have this information at the moment? Is my first question. And my second one is, i- if it's absolutely germane to answering something from an un-audited financial from the end of the last quarter? Can, can we ju, I mean, the end of June? Can we please just sideline this, where the CFO looks it up? It's, it's 20 of 10, just in the interest of time. Thank you for your consideration.
I do think it's...
I could move on to my next question instead, and, um, ask that Mr. Schmidt get back to me at, um, by the end of the comments.
I, I can tell you right now, that page that you're looking at is police, is for police and fire. So, this plan would have no impact on that.
The one that they were looking at was police and fire? They said that it's not police and fire, that there's another page for police and fire.
Maybe Jill, I, I do think it's relevant, because it relates to the, um, the pension liabilities. But I wonder if you could ask your other question, and maybe, um, we can figure out a way to get this to Mr., um, Schmidt? I don't know. If there's a way to...
Sure. Yeah, I'll wait till the end of the, end of the comments to, um, try to discuss this more with Mr. Schmidt. Um, I had another question through you to Mr. Hazelkamp or, um, First Selectwoman Kupchak. Um, I believe that, um, Ms. Kupchak said that 22 people retired last year. So, if one-third of that were town personnel, that would be seven, a little bit more than seven. So, that means that within three and a half years, we would be where the VARIP would get us. Um, but with $6 million more dollars in our pockets, um, so it would naturally occur within three and a half years. Is that, is that what you had said, the 22 people retired last year?
Yes, and I said the majority were police and fire. Very small percentage from the town.
So, it's not a breakout? You can't break out a third being town?
It, uh, I believe we did, we did, we did, there was no way of doing it, but if you look at the retirement we've had, majority are police and fire in any given year. They're, they're really the majority. Um, and we had quite a few police, um, retire the past year.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Representative Bové.
Oh, I figured it out. Um, through you, uh, to the First Selectwoman, Lauren Bové, District 7. I guess, I kind of wanted to ask this question for a while, and I just didn't have the opportunity. But from what I understand, VARIPs are usually done, they're very busy, uh, complicated documents there. Um, they take a long time. I can imagine you spent a lot of time on it. Um, they're very complicated. Each part is very complicated. So, for me to understand it, you know, as a layperson, it's difficult. Um, kind of goes to what Jay was saying. I wish that, you know, the Finance, Board of Finance and Selectmen had a chance to look at this first. Um, so, going on what I know about VARIP, which is admittedly small, I don't believe they're ever done for a purpose other than saving money.
I can't hear you, Representative. I'm sorry, you got cut off.
I don't believe VARIPs are ever done for any other reason than saving money. So, this one was confusing to me. Um, but I do agree with the intent. And I was wondering, are there other ways to achieve that without, you know, putting in a pretty substantial potential debt, um, going forward, when we have so much, you know, unknown coming at us, you know, with, obviously with cliffs, obviously with fill pile? There's just a lot, you know, COVID, who knows what's going to happen with that, and how much money we're going to get, and how much money we're going to need? And I just don't see any really number that says, oh, we're saving $7 million, or, oh, it's, you know, worse, we're going to save $1 million. So, again, my question is, is there another way of achieving this modernization that doesn't involve a VARIP?
So, I, I, I think I spoke extensively about this, um, over many presentations to the RTM about this. No, actually, there isn't. Uh, it's a very arduous process. You're dealing with unions, arbitration, whole host of things, uh, that actually could cost a significant amount of money for the town if you tried to move people out, um, without this program. And lawyers' fees and all of that. Um, and it's, it's, frankly, it's ugly. Um, it's an ugly way to, to deal with this situation with your employees. Um, it's not one that I wanted to engage in.
I'm sure what you're referring to, though. What's ugly? I don't, I guess I, I need more definition on that. What does that mean?
So, ugly, ugly is, um, you know, having to write people up, uh, have them go before arbitration, um, and then there's the thing that, um, in the union contract called bumping rights. So, if you were able, and I spoke about this extensively to this body, if you try to move out a specific employee because they're not doing their job, and you want someone more skilled in that position. You don't get to just remove one person and then put someone you've hired new in there, because the person under them, based on the union contracts that the RTM was all given a copy of, and they have a lot of, uh, language in there that allows someone to just bump into that position because of the union contract. And they may not even have any qualification for that specific job, but because the way the contracts are written, they would get the job.
Um, I'm just, I'm just wondering, I, again, my, my understanding of VARIPs is complicated, and they're, the purpose is usually to save money. And just at the very, very, uh, generic, uh, look at it, it doesn't seem that that's what's happening here. And I'm confused as to why this is the mechanism. I know that you have said all these, you know, things before, and you're saying them again. And I, it's still just, um, I guess I'm just not quite understanding it. I, I certainly don't want to do anything negative to anyone. Um, I think our employees have been great, and I know that you're, you've got a great group. And I know you want to modernize, and I think all of this is, is good, and I want that to happen, too. I just don't want to be... I just don't want to be saddling some, us with, you know, the town with some kind of future surprise that's going to hurt us and make us have to take away some sort of service. It's, you know, and there's nothing really set in stone, everything is sort of like, well, this could happen. So I'm just not, I'm not totally comfortable, I guess.
No, I appreciate that, Representative, and I have vowed to make sure we don't cut any services. I have vowed to take full ownership of this, and I do show savings each and every year based on the actuarials and the information provided. So I, I was hoping that you could have some level of confidence based on all the information that we were able to provide and my pledge to the RTM and to the residents of our town to make sure that we have a more efficient, well-run town government with the highest level skilled workforce that are delivering for our residents in a very customer service-centric culture.
Okay, guys, I agree with that sentiment, obviously, and I support that. I'm just not sure this vehicle is, is the best way to go about it, but we'll have to think about that. Thank you for your, for your time and explanation.
Thank you, Representative.
Representative McCormick?
Yes, good evening, Representative Karen McCormick from District Two. I think First Selectwoman Cupchik just did touch upon some of what I was going to ask about, which was the alternatives to the VERIP. What would our procedures look like going forward in terms of dealing with the unions, dealing with the arbitrations, dealing with the ongoing litigation costs that would be involved if people were terminated for what the town would at some point deem cause? Obviously, we have a lot of uncertainty in that process moving forward and a lot of expense for that. And, you know, perhaps, I'm new to the RTM, this is my first term, and I, I haven't been exposed to, you know, the commitments to make real courageous changes, but what I'm hearing here from First Selectwoman Cupchik is that she's committing to stand by this and stand behind it and to, and to report back to us and to, quite frankly, the citizens of Fairfield on how these changes have been, have effect, have been put into place and how they have affected us moving forward. And, you know, perhaps, I can only believe that because there hasn't been a whole lot of transparency in prior administrations, most recently, that perhaps everybody's not used to the full transparency here. But I'm hearing from, from First Selectwoman Cupchik over and over and over again that she is standing by this, that she believes that this is the best way to move us forward, that in the long run, it will actually save our town and make us more efficient, better run and save money. And I have faith in that. I, you know, call me crazy, but she's been, she's been running in these circles for twenty years and she's been pretty successful at everything she's put her hands on. So I just, I implore everybody to really take another look at what would be the motivation for her to come before us over and over again, spend countless hours while she's got so many other irons in the fire to work out for us, than to, to put her time and effort and energy on trying to get this accomplished? Just would implore everybody to really think long and hard about that question. What would her motivation be? Is she trying to spend tax dollars unnecessarily? Is she trying to straddle us with debt when this is the worst possible time that, that we could actually ask taxpayers to take on any more debt, knowing what we're facing with all the other issues we have? I think you got to think long and hard and do some soul searching on that question because that's what's guiding me. And I thank First Selectwoman Cupchik, I thank her team, her, everybody who has, has researched and dug in deep on these numbers because some of it is, is very, very heavy stuff. And I, I thank her for her efforts in trying to move us forward and, and make us the place that we all really want to be proud of. Because right now, I've been living in this town for fifty-three years and there's been some really, really, really embarrassing moments over the past few years. And I want to get back to a place where I feel proud to say, I'm from Fairfield. This is a town that's run well, it's not corrupt, and we spend our taxpayers' dollars wisely. We think about each dollar before we spend it. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Steele?
Hi, Jeff Steele, District Two. I just want to follow up some of that as well and just say, of course, thank you to the First Selectwoman and her team for bringing this initiative forward. As you know, I'm a supporter of it. I think when we look back a year ago at, at the First Selectwoman coming in, we didn't know what we were going to expect in twenty, twenty twenty. And yes, she inherited the Philpile issue, which she's dealing with, but then COVID came and, you know, I even look at the massive storm that hit in August. I mean, it really devastated a good portion of the town. She's had a lot to deal with and in the same time, she's been able to bring forward, you know, an initiative that will give her, I believe, the tools to try to reorg, to modernize and to make more efficient town government. And there's nothing wrong with that. And to make it hopefully a little more nimble, a little more streamlined, a little more cooperative, customer service friendly, that's all good stuff. But I understand it's raised questions. I understand it has raised questions about costs and that's, that's great. I'm so glad everyone asked the questions. This has gone on quite a bit and, you know, there's nothing wrong with that. And, and I think at the beginning, we all kind of wanted more information, we thought, you know, we needed more from, from the presentation. I think after two, three months, we've gotten most of it, if not all of it so far. Most of the questions have been answered and, and I mean, thank you, Brenda, for you and your team for, for answering all our questions. We brought in the Board of Finance, the Pension Board, we brought in, you know, an actuary firm, we consulted with the town employees themselves, we brought in lawyers, we talked to unions, we've, you know, debated this among members. So the whole process has been amazing. I will say, this is one of those vetted issues I've ever come across in, you know, almost twelve years in town government. So that's a good thing. We're thoughtful about it and we're, we're analytical and we're going through it, so that, that's great. But, but I, I'm glad that, you know, she was able to go back and, and get a better deal from the unions. That's fantastic. And that's because of some of the pressure that was put on, some of the questions that are answered, so that's great. And now we have a plan that has what it appears to be higher savings, lower costs. So that, that's a good thing. And I do agree back to what Representative Gerber said, it would be, I, I look forward, should this be approved, to getting some updates, to seeing how this goes. And I'm hopeful that it will be, be good for the town and for the administration and for government to, to have the tools to, to try to make this as close to the private sector in a compassionate way as we can. So that's just my commentary, but I thank everyone for this process and for addressing all the questions.
Thank you. Representative Gail?
Thank you, Representative Gail, Six. So I, I was actually going to say something similar to what Representative Steele just said, that I, I feel much better about this with the concessions that were won from the unions and the fact that it is just a better deal. I did want to take issue, or not issue, disagree with Representative Bovee's comment that this is usually done to save money. I'm going to quote my sister, who I, I refer to whenever financial matters come up because she is a pension actuary. So I call her and ask nonspecific questions. Sometimes I have her look at things that are, you know, that are public documents available. And so she does this all the time in private industry. And just to, to, you know, summarize our conversation, it's always really expensive. And so, you know, her clients will get to a point where they see these price tags of what it's going to cost, and they have to make a decision of whether it's worth it for them, depending on where they are, what they need to change in their climate, what that's going to mean for them in the future, as to whether the price tag is just too high and they can't do it and they do little attrition things or maybe not-so-nice things, as, as Rep. First Selectwoman Cupchik referred to. Or they bite the bullet, you know, and, and I think she actually said she's never seen anyone who actually went through with it and did it regret it in the long run, because they always make the decision very carefully. And, you know, in, in terms of what that decision rests on, you really have to look at where, at the moment of time for the organization. And right now, I said this in our committee meeting, the moment of time for Fairfield is just so crucial. There's so much change happening. We have so many people moving here, we have so much building going on, we are becoming a city. There is so much more to administrate now than there was even two years ago. And it's, it's, it's that moment of time, in addition to getting the extra concessions, that really puts me in the positive for this as a, something that I really think Fairfield does need a major change and this is the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Distilli?
Hi, Sharon, Distilli, District Three, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I had a couple of last questions. Through you, Madam Moderator, to either First Selectwoman Cupchik or to Mr. Hazelcamp, I'm not sure, you know, whoever's most appropriate. How many employees are there on the town side, like excluding police and fire? Is like three hundred a fair estimate?
Mr. Hazelcamp has stepped out of the room, but I think we typically have around a hundred and nine police officers at any given time. I have Mrs. Schmidt looking through. The majority of the employees are, are on the town side, but let me look, he's, he's looking at our budget book.
Would it, would it be fair to say out of five hundred employees, that about three hundred of them are at Town Hall? Is that about right?
Well, they're town employees.
Well, town employees, I mean, I'm sorry, not just Town Hall.
I need to grab my glasses, Representative, hold on.
I, 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 I feel you there, I get it. I have progressives now.
Okay, so in our bud, all of our budget books.
So the, the total amount, the general fund, without, without WCPA, is four hundred and sixty-three. And of those, four sixty-three.
Yep.
Ninety, ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven are fire. And here in the budget book, it says one fifteen for police.
One fifteen for police, okay. So, okay, so that means that if we, so that means two hundred and fifty-one are town employees. So that means if twenty-three people took the V-RIP, that we're replacing nine percent of our workforce. And if thirty-one people took the V-RIP, we're replacing twelve percent of our workforce. So it would cost us six million to replace twelve percent of our, nine percent of our workforce, and it would cost us eight million to replace twelve percent of our workforce. My last question. So there were twenty-two people who retired last year? Is that what I, I understood that correctly, right? Was it, did I get that right? It was twenty-two people who retired last year?
I think it was between eighteen and nineteen. And the majority were from fire and police.
Okay, so I just did a little quick math based on twenty-two, so my numbers are slightly off, if that's okay? I just did a little, I wish I had a whiteboard. If we, if we assumed that there were, like, okay, so say we assumed that twenty people retired and like a third of those were town employees and not police and fire, so two-thirds were police and fire and one-third was town, then that means that there are seven retirements a year for town employees. So that means in three years, we will have achieved the first V-RIP through attrition and in, the twenty-three people. And in four years, we would achieve thirty-one people, my rap is a little bit off, twenty-eight people, which is almost, you know, the max number that we'd be expecting to retire. So we're spending six million present value for what's going to happen in three years anyway. That's my bottom line. So, I mean, I wish I could support this, but I, I feel like my questions about, you know, the actual savings, I, I wish we had more detail on that. And I'm just really, really concerned with going ahead with increasing our, our long-term liability and there's so much uncertainty going on and I'm just, I'm hoping that there would be another way to be able to achieve this modernization without, you know, saddling a future generation with, you know, paying for this restructuring. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. I think we're, I don't have anyone else in the queue who would like to speak. Representative Vergara, I don't know if you wanted to speak or...
Is Board of Finance member...
I just wanted to respond to Mrs. Representative Distilli. It's six million over twenty years, the impact is on the pension. And you only have to reemploy, retire from the town for a last year.
Reemploy, three, three, and what about the year before? Was the year before twenty-two? I don't know where I wrote the twenty-two down from. So I just wanted to clarify, that's all. Okay. Thanks.
Representative Vergara?
Is Board of Finance member Lori Charlton on the call?
Yes, I just dialed in.
Oh, okay, great. So Lori, you were the one who sent me the sheet and I think you understand what it says a lot better than I do. And I wanted to see if you could raise your questions with Mr. Schmidt and how it relates, how those numbers relate to the VERIP that we are considering right now and what that means for our funded liability.
Sure, so I apologize, I was not on the call previously, so I don't have the context of what was said, but just as background, a couple of the members of the RTM had called and sent information to ask questions about some of the financial aspects of the plan. And we were looking at the most recent numbers for the plan that I think we got presented during the budget. So I was just looking at the latest numbers on the plan as of June thirtieth. And for the town plan, what they indicate is that before the VERIP, our unfunded liability went from thirty-three million a year ago up to fifty-five million as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Obviously, that's before the VERIP. So what that did was it pushed our funded status of the plan from roughly eighty-six percent funded to about seventy-eight percent funded. So, you know, if you add the VERIP on to that, if you add another six million dollar liability on to that, that would get our plans to a funded status, or that, the town plan to a funded status of about seventy-six percent. So, you know, that was my point. I think, you know, typically, the eighty percent threshold is, is what, you know, what the town has looked at in terms of funding status. I think, you know, that's the level where it starts to affect your bond rating, et cetera. And I just wanted to clarify to some of my colleagues what the, you know, what the most recent numbers were. So, so that was my point. Does that answer the question?
Yes, it does. It clarifies it for me, thank you. I also just wanted to say that that's concerning to me. And I feel like it's unfortunate that the First Selectwoman has been handed some really challenging circumstances, the pandemic and this terrible Philpile mess. But I can't just, you know, will away the reality of those things and the huge costs and risks that both of those things present. And then on top of that, the cliffs we're facing and discussions, capital planning discussions where the Board of Finance is talking... of Finance is talking about us being at the upper edge of our bonding limit, and while we're also having discussions about adding in projects that weren't on the waterfall because our town hall is falling apart, and growing mushrooms in carpets, and bridges are falling apart, I just don't, I can't, I don't think that the benefits have been proven to outweigh the costs, and on top of that, these contextual factors for me push me over into thinking that there's a lot more. Other things that need to be prioritized right now, like funding our infrastructure problem, and so I have to vote no.
Thank you. I'm gonna get ready to call for a vote in a minute, but I do see Representative Gerber has a question, so let's do that, and then we'll move to the vote.
Yeah, hi, Bill Gerber. I am pretty blown away by this new, this new information. So, we've been working on actuarial data, providing a report as of July 1st, 2019, those were the numbers that the VRIP impact was based on. These new numbers, I know it's a draft, but this is my, a question for Garrett Schmidt, like, can we afford to have a 76% funded ratio in our pension? I mean, isn't that a major problem?
So, Representative, if I could just interject, I'm a little confused where this came from. This is a draft, and we've had the Pension Board review this entire plan, and they have never brought this document up or this level up. And we just had a Pension Board meeting last week where I heard glowing reports of how well we're doing on all aspects, including actually, conversation about us probably not having to reduce the discount rate because of how well our funds are, and how much we're realizing our return on our investment. So, I have to say, you know, while I appreciate Mrs. Charlton bringing this document at the last minute, we had the Pension Board review this extensively, and this never came up. So, I think probably it's not something that should even be considered because the Pension Board never mentioned this document, and this is what they...
Okay, okay. I think the Pension Board reviewed this in the context of the latest report, which was, which was a year old, so, but if you are willing to say that these numbers don't make sense, and, you know, and that the 76% is...
The Pension Board, if we were gonna have a document thrown into the last minute of this month-long discussion, that the Pension Board probably should have been on the line to discuss it. But again, the Pension Board did review even a higher plan, the plan that cost more and had more of an impact on the liability, and now we have a plan that has much less impact on the liability. So, I just, I would just ask that the RTM, you know, take this for what it's worth, without the Pension Board being a member of the Pension Board validating or discussing this at all.
Okay, I can see how, you know, we wouldn't want to bring in something that hasn't been vetted, and it may not be real. I guess maybe a better way to go about this is if this turns out to be real, you know, over the next couple of weeks or whatever, are you, are you committed to staying above, at 80% or above, or if it turns out that this would push this well below 80%, would you have to look at alternative funding methodologies? And it's something, you know, I don't think we wanted to talk about tonight, but there are different ways to fund this, but how important is that 80% threshold?
So, again, you know, Bill, you know, even though I am a member of the Pension Board, I don't have the same acumen as members of the Pension Board. So, if they think 80% is a number, but this is like a whole discussion that I thought we had with the Pension Board already. I was on the call when they reviewed it, they came on to one of your meetings, I can't remember how many meetings ago that was.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And this never came up.
No, no, the only context, this did not come up, the only context that this came up on was, you know, if the discount rate dropped, what the impact might be. So, I agree with you, this is out of the blue, although it is on a draft report, so it is concerning, and I am curious, I don't know who's appropriate, you know, would answer this, but if this turns out to be a problem...
What I would say is that, you know, I think the RTM has all the relevant information that, you know, we've provided so that you can make a decision on a contract, and that I would say that the Pension Board is gonna do what the Pension Board does to protect the pensions, because that's their fiduciary responsibility, and I would, I would, I would trust them to do just that. And I will, again, listen to their input as the leader of this town when I build my budget, based on their input, as well as the financial advisors, who constantly advise me and our finance department on what we should be doing to protect our community. I by no means will ever do anything to jeopardize our town's bonding rating or anything like that, but again, I trust these people, they are taking care of these things. So, for you to ask me, are you gonna do that, or are you gonna do this, I would say I would expect the Pension Board to advise me, and then I will listen to the advice of them and the financial people. The RTM is tasked with passing a contract, and this is what this contract is, and so I believe that my administration has supplied the RTM with every single piece of the information needed to make a decision about this contract and how it impacts our budget, and I would hope that...
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
That you will take those pieces of information.
Yeah. I know you supplied us with the information, this is coming out of left field. It is crazy that this is coming out of left field tonight, but, and you're saying that you've had meetings with the Pension Board and the financial advisors, and they've all said that we were doing really well, and in fact, that you think the funded, that we're not in danger of going below 80%, I think is what you're saying. But I've never seen this before.
The Pension Board was on your meeting and never mentioned it, which I find a little strange, because I would imagine it would be a topic of discussion, but when we had the Pension Board meeting last week, we got a big presentation from one of our financial advisors, they were saying we were in good shape, and that we literally may not have to reduce our discount rate. So, again, I would venture to say that I think that we, we will listen to the Pension Board, we will review what they have to send us, and we will take their advice going into next budget cycle.
Sorry, who put, but who put that report together that you're looking at? Are these, are these your team's numbers, or are these the, you know, this 78%, where's that coming from?
I actually don't know. I know that the Audit Committee, you know, got their hands all over the place, but I don't know, but I know that it didn't come from the pensions.
So, Jared, are these your numbers?
Hold on, let me ask, let me get Jared.
This is from a draft of the, of the annual end-of-year financial, that's what it is.
And, I'm sorry, who put...
We just got a couple of financial, and we're reviewing it, and so, it's not a final version of it. And then you had also asked about what the, you know, what the impact would be if it were to drop below 80%, or our funded ratio dropped below 80%. I don't know if anybody knows for sure the answer, there are towns that are below 80% that are still AAA rated, but the, you know, I think the main thing is, this is a draft where we're reviewing it, and we'll know more.
Who put, is this your draft? Is this, who put this together? I'm sorry, I know this is out of left field, people are probably going, no...
This is from our independent auditor.
Okay. So, I mean, it wasn't long ago where we had, you know, and Brenda just referenced the fact that, you know, that you guys met with the Pension Board, and that, you know, you're pretty rosy about the financial picture, but this is telling a pretty different story, and it wasn't long ago, we were on a call where people were, I think it was Board of Finance, people were talking about the problems of, you know, falling below 80%. This is completely out of left field, it's new information for us. None of us knew this until like 10 minutes ago or 15 minutes ago, but it seems like a problem. So, you know, I was ready to vote on this.
And that's why we're following, we're following the process that happens every year, where we get it, we get the draft, and then we go back, we can go back to the auditor and get answers to these kinds of questions.
I would imagine, I mean, the Board of Finance is gonna be pretty upset if we drop below 80% based on what they said at the meeting on this topic, and the fact that we might drop it another couple percent because of this, they may be, they may be pretty upset about that as well, and, you know, we may need to revisit how this is financed, I guess. I mean, that's separate from us approving this tonight. You know, the plan may be great, and it may be costly.
We have said that we're gonna, we're committed to funding the ADAC of the pension fund. So, if it does drop, it's gonna cause us to commit more money in the ADAC, and we'll fund it. We'll find a way.
Okay. I mean, I think the point, the point's been made, and I guess now we can all be worried how this is gonna play out, but it's a little crazy that this wasn't, that this wasn't discussed, that this is coming so late. I understand the report was just finalized, right, within the last week or so, but it seems pretty relevant, so... Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mrs. Charlton, did you want to respond?
Sure, yeah, just to, and sorry to cause any confusion, I think it's been stated, but I'm looking at the town's financial statements. So, these are the town's audited financial statements. As a member of the Audit Committee, I got a draft to review, and I was just looking at the schedule. The pension information that's in there was provided from Hooker and Holcomb, and it says of June 30th, and it was my understanding that the auditor was waiting for this information, this was the last piece that they needed to complete the financials, and it came in within the last couple of weeks. They put the information in the draft financials, and these are financials that are, you know, presumably gonna be filed before the holidays. I think the statutory deadline is December 31st, so it was not my understanding that these were subject to change, but, you know, that's, that's kind of the origin of the information. So, again, sorry to cause confusion, but I had wanted to, you know, I had passed the information on because there were a number of questions around our pension liabilities, how much was unfunded, what our funded status was, and how the VRIP would impact it. And, you know, the VRIP, I think, is a relatively modest amount, the $6 million, but our, you know, our funded status has declined pretty substantially, according to Hooker and Holcomb's numbers, and, you know, if you had the VRIP on, it would basically cause our unfunded liability to roughly double since the end of last year. So, that was the point that I was trying to raise to my caucus members. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Vaikono?
Madam Moderator, may I please call the question?
Yes, I think that's a good idea. I'd like to ask the clerk to please call a roll call vote.
You need a second.
Who's knocking?
I'm sorry, Jeff Steele, District 2, I will second that, you just need a second, that's all.
I can't really understand you, I'm sorry.
Oh. You need a second on the motion.
We already did the motion at the beginning, and this is the conversation about the motion.
You were about to go to a vote on it, on the, calling the question, that's all, I'm just seconding the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, thank you.
Madam Moderator, if you're ready to move to a vote, I can avoid the, I'll rescind my motion to call the question. If you're going straight there, that's fine. If not, I wanna end debate.
Yeah, I am going straight there, yeah, thank you.
Okay, then I rescind, then I take back my motion to call the vote, and you can go straight to a vote on VRIP then, thank you.
Okay, thank you Pam. Betsy, are you there, our town clerk?
Yes.
I know it's been a long meeting, yeah, you are. So, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Mike Mahoney?
Yes.
Tom Monahan? Emmy O'Shea?
Yes.
Amy Rudario? Are you voting yes?
Yes, I vote yes.
Yes. Bill Gerber? Pam McCormick?
You're ruined.
Sit down.
Unmuted.
Hard to hear you, Betsy.
Cindy Prom?
No.
Jeff Steele?
Yes.
Hello?
Alex Durrell?
Yes.
Matt Jacobs? Scott Nickel?
No.
Sharon Distilli?
You there, Betsy?
Oh, yep.
This isn't coming through.
Alice Kelly? Meredith Odenek?
No.
Chris Spalier?
No.
Will Diaz? Joe Seibert? Joe Hulk?
No.
No.
Annika L?
Yes.
Lisa Havy?
No.
Tricia Dunmore?
Yes.
What was that last vote?
I'm waiting on Hank.
Yeah, Hank's still on?
Hank, you're on mute.
All right, uh, yes, I vote yes.
Yes, yes. Ms. Tina?
Yes.
Kate Tomlin?
Yes.
George Giannis?
No.
Rick Bauer?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Bill Perdini?
Yes.
Peter Britton?
Yes.
Liz Boffo?
Yes.
Frank Petis?
Yes.
Chris Ringle?
Yes.
Did you get Laura Carson's vote? He wasn't sure if you heard her.
Yes, everything I got. No.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes twenty-one nineteen.
Thank you. Okay. Congratulations, Brenda.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate everyone's love, I appreciate the conversations you've done in me, and I promise not to let our residents down.
Okay. Um, thank you. I, I want, before we adjourn, I just wanna remind people that we have a committee meeting this Thursday and a, um, RTM meeting on Monday. I know this is lots of meetings this month, um, so just wanted to remind you of that. You'll be getting a notice tomorrow morning. Um, may I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Representative Garson, seconded by Representative Nichol. Okay, thanks very much, all in favor.
Hi.
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 Thank you all. Have a good eye.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.[1672.51]